Hello, gentlemen. How are you?
How are you, gentlemen?
Who wants to, who wants to fight for the front row?
Hello. And then we go from there. Me pass by.
I'll ask you to introduce yourselves too, because this is on PAC fourteen, they're recording it. Pam, you've already introduced yourself sometimes.
Yeah. So, I'll let them introduce themselves and then I'm gonna make a brief couple of comments and then I'll let them talk.
Okay, great.
Who wants to go first? It's talk.
Okay. My name's C.K. Twilley, Willard Volunteer Fire Chief, President of Volunteer Fire Chief Association this year.
John Hilton, Powell Volunteer Fire Company President, Wycomica County Volunteer Fire Association President.
Curtis Kennedy, Assistant Chief, Fruitland Fire Company.
So, I just wanted to summarize for council the changes proposed in the budget from prior year to this year. And then I will let them speak for themselves after that. For workers' comp, we provide a stipend to each volunteer ambulance and fire department.
So you get it wrong?
In the past, it was twelve thousand dollars for the ambulance and ten thousand and change for the fire. We're offering to do twenty thousand dollars per, for each of those. We are looking to up their ambulance grant from one hundred and fifty thousand to one hundred and seventy-five thousand. We're looking to up the paramedic EMT grant from two hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. Looking to up the fire grant from one hundred and fifty thousand to one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Looking to up their fire prevention, we just give one overall stipend of, for fire prevention. Last year it was five thousand, we're looking to give ten thousand. Continue to provide the forty-two thousand, six thirty-five for respiratory protection. Still have them apply through emergency services for thirty, up to thirty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars per decon trailer. And I, I will let them explain what those are if you have questions. So each year that they, they can apply for that. And then we did put in here the LOSA program as well at four hundred thousand dollars. This is approximately a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar increase per department for a one point three million dollar increase between fire and EMS. And then I'll turn it over to let them speak.
The cost that we're getting won't even cover the inflation. We are very appreciative of what we got. I know there's been some talks about different revenue streams as far as the three hundred dollar thing and that kinda fell flat. I think the county should look at putting some kinda fee on building permits. The people in the community should not have to pay for the people that's coming there. And they are. You can talk about like the decon trailers, that responds with any hazmat response in the county, depending on the side of the county. We're asking for ten thousand to cover that. Now it had become, we have to apply for a grant, used to get that, we used to get that automatically. Now we have to apply for it and we have not got it in...
Two years?
Couple of years. I mean, actually, fire companies are having to buy their own because the trailers are getting wore out. They're replacing themselves just to, to be able to safe, be safe up and down the road.
The, the applying for the decon grant through emergency services is extremely hard. And they've been working on that for two years now, trying to get an application, they still haven't got the first one through.
We have to apply through emergency services for that through Lorenzo Cropper.
Any reason why?
The funding is coming from the state. It is not funding that the council, the county has.
No, I just didn't know if anybody even had any idea why there's such a delay from the state.
But, but they do the work. It's more filling the grant out, running the grant.
We, we actually have to start, to start the paperwork on the grant. The fire company that has that decon trailer that is requesting that ten thousand dollars for that specific decon trailer has to start the grant process with them. And the three decon trailers are located in Sharp Town, Parsonsburg, and Delmar.
And they will respond on any hazmat incident in the county, anywhere.
Have you, C.K., you mentioned a fee on building permits. Is there any, have you researched to see if there's any other counties that do that?
I have not, Joe.
Municipalities?
I have not, no.
First time I've heard that, that's interesting.
And, and I'm just putting that out there. I mean, I know money's tight.
Yeah.
For everybody, money is tight. You know, we're, and we're not at, well, we're asking for a lot, I know we are, but really what we're getting, I mean, is, is kinda low to cover up. Because a lot of these companies now are having to pay paramedics and EMTs to drive the ambulance during the day. So everybody's getting out in a timely manner. I mean, that is getting tough on some of them. I can only ima, I'm very fortunate for where my department, we have three or four around during the day that are pretty diehard ambulance drivers and able to drive.
I also see, I'm sorry.
But we are, they're, they're getting wore out as well.
I also see in John's letter mentioned the possibility of placing EMS providers on the county benefit plan, health insurance and retirement plan. Is that something other counties do, John? Have you done any research on that, see if that's...
Some counties do, but they're, they're, they're county employees at that point. Technically, some people look at our EMS as county employees because we receive funding from the county. That was one that Chief White, who's not here with us this afternoon, that was one thing he's, we've talked about for the past couple of years with you and John and the previous council last year. Because it would be something that would help encourage and keep EMS providers here. Because right now, they had graduation Wednesday night. Out of the class that graduated, there wasn't one paramedic coming to Wycomica County.
Now, we've heard this before about possibly making them county employees. We've also heard the comments made, should EMS be run by the county? How would that, and we don't wanna get too deep in the conversation because we're here to talk about the budget, but how would that work with the fire companies owning the equipment and housing the equipment and the people working out of a volunteer fire department? Would that work?
It wouldn't, wouldn't, it would not work. There's no way. I mean, I'm the volunteer fire chief of Willards, there's no way that would work.
Yeah.
You know how it would be to work in somebody else's house?
Yeah, I understand. That's what I was, that's what I was asking, I just...
And I'm not, I'm just, I mean, asking the facts, you know what I mean? That would, that would not work.
You hear these things said, you know, and written about, then you wonder...
I mean, that would be like going home and somebody sitting on your couch.
Yeah.
See how that goes.
And I, I agree with him because the city of Salisbury went through that problem. But the question I have to ask, have you ever thought about federal funding for volunteers? Do they give federal funding to volunteers?
We receive a state funding known as the five oh eight money, the AMIS fund, every year.
But that, that can only be used for so many things.
Yes, that's only, it, it can't be used for employees. You're referring to something like the SAFER grant and you have to apply for that every year. And you may not get it if you, it's a touch and go, who needs it more?
The other, the other issue with something like a SAFER grant is once you get that grant, you are mandated to maintain that level of force for, I think it's five years after the grant runs out. So, let's say you get too funded and then you have to come up with, not through federal funding, five more years. Or you owe back every dollar of that grant. So, those SAFER grants have...
Stayed up.
Major...
Strings attached.
Strings attached that are, that are hard limitations to deal with. I remember seeing those grants going through this, when I was with the city of Salisbury and we were, when I was there, we, we were very hesitant and only did, in the five years I was there, one SAFER grant. Because of the concern of the minute you agree to that, you've made, said that you're going to maintain that level. You can't, you can, you can't just say, oh, well, I'm gonna get rid of ones that I've had before. No, you have to now maintain the level that you had and keep it for five years or you owe every dollar back to the federal government.
Now, I do know the city hasn't applied for it and got it more than once since then.
And that has, that contributes to the base that the fire, that the city has, that they have to maintain now.
C.K., you mentioned that you thought it was a large increase that you guys were asking for. And I, I don't think that it is, because I'm sitting here thinking about it. Can you imagine what it would cost Wycomica County to pay for all the fire departments in Wycomica County? Pay for the equipment, pay for the employees, insurance, everything else that comes along with it, electricity. You know, we have, we have to back the volunteers, we have to. And we have to make sure you guys get what you need and that's the way I see it.
Well, in all fairness, actually, I want to speak out of my, in all fairness, they actually asked for a three million dollar increase and we just, there's only so much money in the pot, so we were able to do this. So we actually, and just to be transparent, brought it down. So, still gave the increase, I think it was a million dollar increase, we were able to do a million in sum, but it was a three million dollar ask. So, but again, you know, certain departments are asking for X amount of dollars, you know, we can't, you know...
I thought he was referring to that you thought this was a big ask.
Well, we, what we were bringing, yeah, I knew we asked for a lot from the get-go.
Oh, okay.
You, you know what I mean? I knew we asked for a lot and we kinda aimed high just to cover...
I was referring to these numbers.
Oh, well, these numbers, I mean, this barely just dove us covering. I mean, honest with you, tires for a fire truck now, twenty grand. So that twenty-five we got on the fire side, that's gone. I mean, I got fire trucks in our building, you can only, you're supposedly supposed to keep tires on them between five and seven years.
Right.
I mean, and you're looking, I got eight times that by si, I mean, times that by six, and actually I got one that's got ten. Don't take long just to spend the money. And that's just for tires. That's not including the fire truck. We're talking million dollars for a fire truck, eight-hundred it up right now, that's the average price, take three years to get it. New increase on the motor is just a hundred thousand dollars in just the motor when they, with the new emissions.
And with the new emissions, it's gonna make it even worse on use of the fire trucks.
I mean, no, that's not your guys' problem, but you know, that's just something we have to face when we're trying to buy a fire truck. And you know, we keep a fire truck thirty years. Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, there's most departments in this firehouse, then it's departments that, and look, they got a thirty-year-old fire truck. I got a thirty-year-old fire truck that's front-run right now. And in town, she's running first.
So yes, they did ask for a higher dollar amount. The one point three is what we did put in as the request for the funding, for the one, for an increase.
And we do appreciate what we're getting. You know, don't, don't think me wrong, we really appreciate what we're getting. And we understand that the pie isn't only but so big, you can only slice it so many times. That's why I brought up the other revenue stream, because we've got to do something for the volunteers, or I mean, because it's bad.
I agree.
I mean, because you're talking fifty million dollars. If you, you were talking about fire, paid fire service in the county, and I hate to say fifty million like that, but that's just what it would take. I mean, because Worcester County did a study two years ago and it was twenty-two just for them. So you think about how big Wycomico is and what we cover, you can double that and it's probably, I mean, fifty million not gonna catch it right now the way things are, the way things cost.
You have something to say?
Me?
Yeah.
I was just listening.
How many volunteer fire departments do we have? And I know Parsonsburg, Willards...
Eleven.
Eleven. There's eleven of us.
So each one of, each one of those numbers that I said is multiplied by eleven for the funding streams. So we multiply every single one of those requests by eleven and fund it out.
You know, it used to have impact fees in the county, we were the only group that didn't get any. And let's face it, and, and I don't know whose toes I'm gonna step on, but the roads, they didn't use the impact fee for the roads because they're falling apart underneath our vehicles.
We're cutting the roads budget this year.
Yeah, you know what I mean? So, I mean, that's, you know what I mean? That's just, I mean, that's just something we gotta look at. I like, understand that there's only been so much money, but we've got to figure out another weather for the stream for the volunteer fire service.
And the volunteer fire companies, every one in this room here that's a volunteer, we do all types of fundraisers every year.
Oh, I see it.
Shane, you personally have seen, and, James, you've personally seen, Joe, you've seen what Powell, just Powell does, three, four events a year, not counting our monthly breakfast.
And the countless hours getting up at nighttime.
The barbecues.
EMS calls, fire calls, fundraisers.
I know we gotta do what we gotta do to make, to pay for everything here, but there's no fire company that should stand on a corner with a boot and beg for money.
Right.
And that's what we're doing, ladies.
What, what can we do to help with retention at a county level?
Well, we're also gonna use that ten thousand dollars that she talked about in a fire prevention for recruitment and retention as well. And you bring that up, and I understand we got a LOSA program that was, that's, that's, I believe...
We're working on. She knows the property tax.
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna, and I know some of them are not gonna be for it, but I'm gonna tell you, as a fire chiefs, I mean, I'm the president, I have brought it up numerous times, and ask them, what do you want to do? They want the property tax thing. And I know it, does it not cover everybody? You got renters, you got a few people that's not going to include, but we gotta start somewhere because...
Right.
I mean, it's like, we're going down a mountain. I mean, right now, people are just quitting because they got other things to do.
So you have a LOSA program?
So, we...
What is that?
Never really developed it.
Now, that's a new program that we've all come up with in the last couple of years.
Right.
And that was actually designed by former gentleman David Fitzgerald.
So the LOSA program is, is such that it, instead of being a retirement fund, it is a retention fund. And as you, as you gain number of years, you gain dollars. In every five years, you would add money to a payment for a volunteer. So it would reward the volunteers at five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five. It maxes out the total dollar that you give. Because of the change of administration, it, and some of the other things that have been coming to council, it has been put, it had been put on the back burner. We can bring, we are really close to having a framework that we could bring to council to discuss. But what it would do is reward those who stay as volunteers and the longer you stay, the more you get. Once you hit twenty-five years, you would get one at thirty, it just doesn't grow at thirty. So the maximum dollar amount would stay the same, but you would continue to get it. And it's intended to pay for those who are currently volunteering.
Thing is, is I mean, it was, the, the idea of it was to encourage retention. What I found out almost immediately when this was first proposed is you had a lot of people who've been in for a long time saying, well, I've already been in twenty-five years, so I should be getting a five thousand dollar check or ten thousand dollar check. And immediately, things can begin to unravel.
Quickly.
Yes, and, and believe me, I think you all know we have, as Shane says, we wanna do as much as we can for everyone, but we gotta make sure that we, sort of, I think we'd have to think of how we would...
Saying that.
How we would, how we, how we would view that and how we might address it on a lesser scale possibly. I mean, respecting length of service, but at the same time, starting it from a particular time moving forward.
That, at that point, John, no disrespect, you're gonna lose a lot of volunteer firefighters.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to avoid, John.
If you, if you try to tell them they have to start from, starting here, after they put twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, and some that have, got fifty years in, they're still very active, they're gonna say, forget it, we're done.
So the intention was not to start anybody back at zero. The intention of the plan was, is if you've already given twenty-five years, then you've hit the twenty-five-year number.
So that was part of the plan, that, that some of the people who've been in forever will automatically get that check.
The piece that is not, was not in the original plan and may still not be because we're still fine-tuning the, the dollar amount is those who are no longer actively volunteering. And so those are the ones that, well, I put my twenty-five years in and I, I'm not doing anything anymore, where's my five thousand dollars? That, again, going back to your comment, is we gotta start somewhere. The question is, is do you start with the ones who are currently helping? I understand the sacrifices that others have made in the past to get these programs to, these departments to where they are, but we're trying to maintain what we have.
A point-based program? You have to make so many points a year to...
Well, the state program is fifty points to be active.
And it would, it would...
And that's a LOSA.
What are the points based on? Calls?
Calls, chairman of the committees, anything.
Drills.
That's pretty interesting.
Training.
Yeah, because you would want them to be truly active.
Oh, yeah, and when we brought it up, we wanted a lifetime members to get something, the ones that put a lot of time in. And I know of a few members that are active in the fire department, they just don't get all their points because they're older. They don't get up at three o'clock in the morning to go to the fires and all that. So you mean, they do the fundraising, they do all the administrative stuff. They should get a little something out of this, they've put a lot of time in. I mean, myself, I've put twenty-nine years in this year, I got twenty-nine years in right now.
You're real?
Yeah.
One more year, you'll get a five thousand dollar check.
And, and you know, we're, it's not all about money, but it's kinda trying to pad the pocket of them a little bit, make them a, it's a lot easier to tell somebody you're going to work for a little something or tell the wife that you got to leave for three hours tonight because you got to go firehouse, work a bingo. At the end of the year, I'm gonna get a little something. And that's why I'm back to the property tax thing. Your wife ain't gotta pay a check, kind of check, kind of check out to the county for property taxes at the end of the year, it's worth getting and going to work a bingo. It really is.
Or going to a drill or standby.
I don't have any problem with that.
And no disrespect to Pam or Julie or anybody, but the volunteers in the, from the chiefs meeting and the volunteer firefighters that come to the fire county association meeting, and some of you have heard it, they are more apt to, to aim for the property tax credit first before the LOSA program.
No offense to me, John, I told, because Pam had the letter, so we're working on it.
No, I, I understand.
And I know Pam, it got through to Pam's life, I mean, she had nothing to do with it.
And I was a, I've, I've been a thorn in Pam's side.
It's almost five o'clock.
I'm done. I, 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 I'll see you guys on Monday.
And even with myself, you know, you're, the LOSA program, you're gonna pay everybody. The property tax thing, you're gonna pay me, my, my, my wife, that's two people. There's a lot of them. This gentleman back here, his wife is a member as well. You're not gonna get, you're not double-dipping here, you know, you're just gonna get one hit from us.
Same here.
For two people, you know what I mean? John's the same way. You know, it just, I think we could start with the property tax thing and say, look, guys, this is what we're trying to do right now, we are also trying to do this other revenue stream. I mean, Lady's been elected for four years, she's got plenty of time to work on this, as well as Pam. And I know you guys got a lot going on, you know, that would be something we could work on the next year or so, you know, look, we got the LOSA thing program, we can get it started then, you got a property tax thing, you know, you're doing something for us. We could not badmouth anybody if those programs just got going, I can tell you that.
Joe. Pam. Have, have you ever, because this property tax thing's been, excuse me, floated around quite a bit. Have you ever put a pencil to how many volunteers we have, what kinda numbers you could do with a property tax reduction for volunteers and what it would take out of our revenue stream?
So, um...
A lot less than fifty-five million.
It, it, yes, it is.
I mean, you gotta pull, you gotta pull one figure out of the air per, per property, I guess.
So the piece I, I don't have is I honestly don't know how many of their volunteers are property owners.
Is that the figure John, uh, Don Fitzgerald was working on?
No, that's the LOSA program.
So I don't have, I don't have a concept of...
We need that.
Um, so, you know, can you, can, can they tell me, you know, ten of their volunteers, a hundred of their volunteers? That, that's, that's the hard part. I will say...
Seems to me like that's the simplest form to go.
Well, but again, and I will, I, I get it, it is, the other piece of it is, is that in this current time of reducing tax rate, it doesn't really, it would not impact us as much. Because we're having to reduce our tax rate to, to stay at the two percent.
Right.
Now, in a year where our, where, we're, we're not in that, assessments aren't rising, would be the year that this could impact us. So this fiscal year, twenty-four, if I was using it as twenty-four as a base, what it would mean is that maybe we're not lowering the tax rate to the eighty-eight number, maybe we're only lowering it to eighty-nine. Because all the other properties within the county would be offset for those, for that tax savings to those people. So, in rising assessments, it would not impact us as much as in a period of time where we are in stagnant or decreasing assessments.
So, and I know you've got all these other things to do, okay? If, if the eleven fire departments submitted to you the number of active members that's meeting the points, okay, that's what you gotta have, right? They submitted that number to you and then somebody, or you could take, you could take several different numbers as far as this goes, of what amount you wanted to reduce the property rate and then give that to the council and to the county executive of what that would take away from the revenue.
Yes, so the, honestly, the easiest part would be if they could give me a list of those that are meeting and their property address, because honestly, it would give me their, the assessment.
You, you don't need the assessments. If you're taking, wait a minute, if you're taking, you're just taking a basic number off of the property tax, right?
But, um...
You're gonna give them a two hundred dollar break a year or five hundred.
Well, we could do it that way.
Yeah.
Or we could do it, you know, because some of the other ones are based on, you know, it caps out an assessment number. The cleanest way to have the clearest picture would be to have the addresses. If you just wanna know the total number, then it would be name and how many, how many of those that have the points meet the requirement.
If you have the address, that kinda means like you're gonna take what their assessment is. And I know what you're gonna hear then, you're gonna hear somebody say, so-and-so's getting a tax break because they own a million dollar home and I only own a home that's worth two hundred thousand. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, I, I...
The cleanest way, we're gonna give you volunteers fifteen hundred dollars off your property taxes and that's how we're gonna do it. If she needs a copy of my property tax, I'll bring it to her.
I started at two hundred, you jumped it off.
I'm just saying, whether the county's is done. I mean, look, we're all business, you guys are businessmen. If I told you today for a million dollars, I'm, you could make fifty million at the end of the year, you all will be at a bank Monday morning.
When, when we came to you the first year with this, we, we brought you the Queen Anne's County copy. Queen Anne's does twenty-five hundred max out over five years, starts at five hundred dollars and increases five hundred dollars a year. That's what we brought you. We handed it to each one of the gentlemen that were here at the time, we handed it to John Posoda and everybody else. It got pushed around and pushed around. That's what we were using as a base. And what they do is they use increasing the number each year to, you cap out. Not everybody's gonna have a cap out of twenty-five hundred. I personally used mine, mine's gonna cap out at a thousand dollars. It'll take two years for me to cap out.
That's just a thought, Pam, I mean, you know.
And I mean, again, if they...
Based on points.
If, if they provide me at least names and points of those who are property owners, we could do a rough calculation.
Yeah.
To, to be able to implement anything and I would, before we ever pass anything, I would want to be able to give you guys a very specific, if, depending on how we go about it. And so I would actually need addresses at that point.
Now, I know C.K. and John and some of the other folks are gonna disagree with me, I say that's a great retention tool, if we could do it. But it's not a recruiting tool.
It's, it's a recruiting tool.
Your young people, your young people are runners.
And that's why...
Yeah, but they, it's both.
It takes us old heads to teach them young heads what they gotta do when we're all dead and gone.
I understand. John and I have had this conversation.
And it would make them wanna buy instead of rent off.
Right, yeah. I mean, it would be an incentive. Hang on, hang on, hang on.
It is.
I want to say one more thing.
Oh, Shane, I was gonna say Shane.
Oh, you want to say Shane?
So the way the fire company would like to see this is also use a point system. You wouldn't just be a fire, belong to a fire company.
Oh, no, you're gonna be active.
You have to be active.
You're gonna get your fifty points a year for the LOSA and that's how we're gonna, that's how you're gonna get your property tax thing from the county. You're gonna be an active member, no, you're just not gonna be a, a member and get it. No, no, you're gonna do something. I mean, we're gonna make them work a little.
You're gonna have to be active.
Gives you a good...
I just want to say this, I, I hear the incentives for the volunteer fire departments, but we have to look at these fire departments. They, if it wasn't for the volunteer fire departments, the safety of people getting to the hospital and saving their homes from fire, we need to find a way that we can fund this. I say, I see we fund other things, to me is not priority, but I look at, this is a priority for the smaller towns that doesn't live, some of them don't live in the hospital, might have to go to Berlin, I don't know how far you go. But I think we should look at, I, I hear that, like the war, to me, that's not important to me as someone's safety. And, and I know they probably already planned the money for that, but just how we can put things on the back burner to prioritize something that's gonna save lives in our community.
And tourists that come here and spend their money.
Huh?
And tourists that come here and spend their money in our county, in our county, I mean, you've got softball tournaments, you gotta be responding, you gotta get an ambulance out there to the Henry Parker place to get, get them to the hospital. I mean, it takes care of everybody, just not locals, it's everybody.
And some might not agree with me, the Shaw, Salisbury University's bike rally every year.
Seagull.
Seagull century. Believe it or not, just a lot of ambulances have to deal with that.
Mm-hmm.
Because they, they get hurt quite a bit.
You have a question, Josh?
Yeah, just say, you know, at the end of the day, we have a lot of expense that goes in to make this happen. Thanks God you all have been there for so long to, you know, to volunteer, but we have a limited amount of revenue. You know, I say it again and again, I am very uncomfortable with the fact that fourteen percent of our budget is due to the kindness of the federal government and the state government. If that kindness changes, we're really gonna be in some trouble. So I think we need to be looking at all other ways to be able to get in revenue to address the problem. At the end of the day, we gotta pay the folks, you all, you do the work, you know, you need to be able to be paid. I, I grew up in... I, I, I grew up in Mardella, I knew, that was, culturally, that was the thing to do, everyone, you join the, you know, the volunteer fire, everyone hang out there, you know? That's shifted, you know, I go back to the, um, you know, it's not that way as much anymore, and that's kinda sad. Uh, so, uh, we need to shift that, at the end of the day, I just wanna see folks paid and, for doing the work that they need to do. And, you know, we have a whole lot of things that we can do to change that, you know, I mean, we can fix the revenue cap, you don't have to get rid of the revenue cap. And I bring that up, because that's, that's cost to the, that's, that's, everyone has said, that's cost, you know, eight million dollars or so, that could've gone to you guys instead. But there are things that we can do, there are impact fees, as it was mentioned before, and I'll say this, the impact fees that we got rid of, you know, that has a, we do all these things because we wanna have development, at the end of the day, it's not my decision, it's the county executives, but, um.
Well, you have to, you do have to vote it in, you do have to vote it in.
I'm not only, not solely my decision, I'll say that, but I do think we need to be, you know, it's nice that we can think through ways to try to retain and to give money here and there, but the, we've gotta be able to address this in a substantive way. I see other counties, you know, I get the Mako emails, and I see what other Allegheny and others are trying to do to address this, it's not, it's not unique to us, um, but we really need to address this now.
And Josh, just so you know, um, out of most of the counties in Wycomico, in the state, Wycomico is realistically the only one that isn't doing something for their volunteers. Even Somerset does.
I mean, it's pretty clear we don't do it for the money.
Yeah.
We do it for the people, all them out there, I mean, it ain't about us.
And it's, it's been a family, it's been a family for many years, and I, I wanna see that continue, but we've gotta pay, we've got, we've gotta pay you guys, and we've gotta be able to do, the, the current system is not working, it's gotta be addressed.
What do you think the number of volunteers would be now?
Approximately four hundred total.
Yeah, give or take.
Give or take about four hundred total, and out of that, you got probably only half of that that own a home.
That's, that was my next question, so honestly, you're, you're in about a three hundred thousand dollar range as far as total expenses to the county.
Yeah.
And that's just somewhere to start, you know, I think the LoSa program down the road, we could get it going, you know, get some ideas, let Pam work on how we're gonna qualify for that, I know she's got a lot going on with the change and all that. That's why I say I don't rush that, but this property tax thing, um, like, I really wished it was a real priority.
I think too, I really like the fact that you talked about the point, CK, and John, that they had to be active, and, and that could, creates the incentive for them to be more active. And if they're more active, they're gonna appreciate it a lot more, and I think, I think that's a real plus.
John, we could, we, we could rescind the half a million dollar tax break for the Ross building and give that to the fire department.
Yeah, okay, Joe, we'll talk, we'll talk about that math later. It, it will pay off in dividends later, trust me.
So you say you wish it was a real priority?
Yeah.
Not a game you're working on, right?
The LoSa program, yes, I, I will readily admit that the LoSa program, each time something else comes up, it does get shuffled down on the list.
You know, I'm talking about the tax break.
He wants that.
That LoSa program, we had nothing to do with that.
Quit saying LoSa, there's no more LoSa, put your ears out.
Property, property tax.
I'm wish the property tax thing was a priority.
So what would we have to do to make it a priority, what do we have?
Executives, I'm sure, between executive and Bunky and Pam, they'll, they'll know what, what, what we're gonna probably be looking for here.
Well, I'd be very interested in seeing it.
Do that in hundred-dollar increments, okay?
Okay.
What a hundred-dollar tax break would do, what a fifteen hundred dollars, and anything in between.
Fifteen hundred dollars average, Joe, is around three hundred, fifteen hundred dollar average house would be about, be about three hundred thousand, yeah.
Yeah, but we, we could see, you know, we could see.
I, I, um, yes, I will, it, it will not be.
We can just do the hundred dollar, and we just multiply it with fifteen, whatever, we need, we have it tomorrow?
No.
We gotta have it before the tax bill comes due.
Tomorrow Saturday.
We gotta have it for the tax bill.
First thing we need to know is exactly how many firemen you have that's meeting the point standard, right?
That own a home.
And, and own a home.
That, that, I can, I will get that, I will contact all the presidents, and I'm certain CK will help with the contacting the chiefs to get all this information.
This won't affect this year's budget, because it'll be on next year's, is that correct?
Unless we did a budget amendment.
So.
You have to do a budget line.
I mean, we're not gonna pass it tomorrow, anyway.
So I, I would recommend that we work on it to make sure it is clean and done for a fiscal twenty-five, because, primarily because of the advertising associated with a constant yield tax rate that we're going to a hearing next week on, um, because if this changes how much we're collecting, then we're not collecting the full two percent, and the eighty-eight, um, cent number that we have is based on collecting that full number.
And volunteers have been asking for this for so long.
Four years.
I would.
Yep.
You know.
We would, we would violate state law then, and we would not be, we would lose out forever on our two percent. If we make, try to make this happen now, we will not meet, because we have the two percent revenue cap, if I have to lower taxes for specific people, it would lower the amount that we would collect, which is, will be under the two percent, and that two percent would be, that, that lowering, it would be small, but it would still be a lowering, would be with us for the rest of our time because of revenue cap.
We'd have to amend the tax rate, is all we'd have to do.
But you have to advertise a new constant yield, because it's not the constant yield, and you have to meet that deadline, uh, you have.
Yeah, I, I get it, yeah, it's, it's a little bit too late for this year, yeah, I, I, I get it, I get it.
It, it is a, it is not as simple as just saying, we now want our tax rate to be this.
I know it's not simple, but I'm sitting here thinking, I've heard this said four years, you know, I'm not a fireman, but I, I have a lot of friends who are firemen, and they've been asking for help for a very long time, and if there's anything that we can do to make this happen sooner than later, I would love to do that. That's why I look to you and say.
I, my recommendation to the county would be is that it's a fiscal twenty-five.
Which, it, which would affect next year's taxes.
Yes.
Twenty-five sounds like a real long far off, it's, it's next year's.
It's one, it's one year, if, if.
It might take us a year to get this.
It, it, because of the fact that it is, I, I don't know all of the legislation that would need to, and then I think it would require, I think it would be legislation, which means it would require a sixty-day waiting period, we're now past the point in time that I could get a tax bill out.
Yeah, it wouldn't happen this year.
I, I can't.
So we could, though, keep the fire departments updated, hey, this is the step we're at, this is what we're doing, we're, we're going in the right direction.
But even if, even if we wanted to, it would be legislation which requires a sixty-day waiting period, which then means I would not get our tax bills out for the rest of the county in a timely fashion.
It wouldn't be required, Mrs. Holey, it wouldn't be required to get a referendum, would it, to change the formula for the two percent?
This wouldn't change the formula for the two percent, what this would change is we would have to add language associated with legislation to give this credit.
Well, what I mean now is that the two percent is, is on prior, uh, the prior assessments, but it allows for, um, new construction. And I'm wondering if we then, if we're gonna change the formula again to allow for subtraction for, um, you know, for, um.
That would just be off of the number that we have.
Something we do, it's something we would do here.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's more of the fact that we'd have a sixty-day waiting period for.
I get it.
Legislation to go into effect.
I get it, yep, yep, okay.
Well, this isn't part of our budget deliberations, really. No, but I think, yeah, I mean, we've been talking about this, but this isn't part of what, you know.
Right, well, we're trying to stay on track, yeah. Any, uh, any other questions anyone has in reference to the budget?
Would a, would a full-time grant writer help you?
Yes.
For the county, I mean, would they be able to help you with your grant applications?
There's no, there's no argument, yes.
Okay.
And we really wanna try to get that moving.
I'm looking at all this, cost of all this equipment, and with, uh, more and more electric vehicles coming online, is that gonna require additional equipment investment down the line?
Oh, yes, right now.
And training.
When's, when's your next ladder, electric ladder truck being shipped in?
Never, never.
Have you had an electric vehicle fire, anybody, any of the?
No, no, but we've, uh, we've purchased, uh, about two weeks ago, we purchased two tools that, uh, plugs into the electric port that kills all the power to the vehicle, when we have extrication, um, we need to cut somebody out or for a fire. Um, we did buy two for one for each unit to have, so we can cut the electric off to the vehicles, which is expensive, thirteen hundred dollars apiece. It's expensive, but it's, it's for safety for us.
I have one of them for some of mine, maybe others. I know it's affecting the car dealerships, cause they're, the insurance companies are saying they can't keep electric vehicles in the building overnight because of the fire hazards.
And.
Do we have any other questions? Budget related, Joe? Anymore? Good? Um, anyone, any comments you'd like to make, anything you wanna add?
I have nothing, gentlemen.
We appreciate your input, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next Saturday. Third Saturday of every month till September, ma'am, come down, get you some.
You're at Mardella the same day.
We have had a member of the community donate five hundred dollars for first responder dinners, uh, on our chicken barbecue. So if you know anybody, cops, nurses, firemen, tell them to come down, there's a five hundred dollar tab at the fire, at the chicken barbecue at the Willards next, this month.
And just a.
Great.
Piece of word, next week, the twenty-first through the twenty-seventh is EMS week. All your EMS clinicians, it's that where people are starting to do stuff for them, and all the stuff they go through.
Are you cooking that, uh, chicken, CK?
I made the sauce.
Okay, just making sure.
Oh, my God.
Yep, I made the sauce.
That's good.
Our breakfast, just start back up in.
That's the key.
Hope the wind blows from the north to the south, so it covers the five, uh, highways, so people stop in. It'll smell like when you're driving by.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, you guys have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.